2021 meeting of the Dover Area School Board, if you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Allman, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. DeChau?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emmig?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Rahauer?
Here.
Nine present.
Okay, thank you. First up is our Presentations category. Mrs. Kroom.
Okay. So at the beginning of each year, we pause to salute a group of nine individuals who spend dozens of hours each month voluntarily leading our schools and making difficult decisions. They are our school directors. This year more than ever, we need to take time to thank these very dedicated individuals for making those difficult decisions while weighing health, safety, and academics for our students and our staff. So to the public, if you see any of these dedicated people around the area, please stop them and take some time to thank them for navigating the district through this crazy school year of major building projects, COVID-19, and very importantly, the installation of a new superintendent, assistant superintendent, and chief financial and operations officer. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for everything you do for the Dover Area School District. So in front of you, you have a little gift from the district, and if some of them want to hold theirs up, just kind of take a look at it, and yeah, it's with all of our new swag, so hopefully you have something fresh and new to wear out and about. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's very nice of you and very much appreciated by all of us. So next up will be our first public comment period. This is a 30-minute period for three-minute comments. If there's anybody waiting, do we know if there's anybody out there? Okay. All right. So we'll jump right into Board President's Communication. I did want to let you know that we did have some previous executive sessions. We had one on September 1st at 7:00 p.m. to discuss school reopening, September 8th to discuss the school reopening discussions and the superintendent search, September 10th for high school and middle school building tours, and another one on September 15th, just so you have those for your records. I do not have anything else under Board's President's Communication. So with that, we'll move right into our approval of minutes. The motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November None, Mrs. Allman? Motion carries. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes of the December 3rd, 2020 Board Reorganization Meeting. There's a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Mrs. Allman? And the motion carries. And finally, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 3rd, 2020 Special Board Meeting. Any questions or discussion? Mrs. Allman?
I'll take an individual vote. Mrs. Britton?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. DeChau?
Yes.
Mr. Delauter?
Yes.
Mr. Eifert?
Yes.
Mr. Emmig?
Yes.
Mrs. Herman?
Yes.
Mrs. Maylie?
Yes.
Mr. Rahauer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to our Policy Committee section. Mrs. Kroom.
Okay. Below you have a number of policies up for your approval tonight, and so I'd like to go through them with you one at a time, and then we have one for you to approve above under this section. So Policy Number 103 Discrimination Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Students, Policy 218.3 Discipline of a Student Convicted Adjudicated of Sexual Assault, Policy 252 Dating Violence, and Policy 200 Enrollment of Students Administration Regulation. All of these policy involve the adoption of Act 110 of 2020, which requires a student who is adjudicated of sexual assault of another student is not allowed to attend the school that the victim attends. So all of these policies reflect this law from 2020, and what basically happens is the student has to be expelled or has to be moved somewhere or put in alternative education. So all four of those policies are just revisions adding that law change there. Then Policy 236, our Student Assistance Program. This is a new policy. It's a policy we haven't had and need to have. The Students Assistance Program identifies students who have substance abuse issues or mental health issues to a team in each of the buildings. This is required at the secondary level, so this is a PSBA policy we are accepting there. And the other one under the bottom, under consent, is the bullying, cyberbullying. I think this was brought to committee. This is a revision of our previous policy. We changed the definition of bullying to mimic our definition in our training of
discussed, now I'm prohibited from speaking. I don't, I'm not comfortable with that language being in there to vote to approve that, and that's why I asked that to be pulled from consent.
So this was PSBA's recommendation, and I agree. I'm assuming it is in the wake of COVID. I also think part of the purpose of it is to manage board meetings better. So you have a sense. Now, in the past, if you remember, I think we had a meeting with a lot of people last spring, you still allowed, Nate still allowed, those who showed up to come speak. But we also have in the policy, which we did in our previous policy, that there's only 30 minutes for public comment. So I think the purpose of it is PSBA is trying to help boards manage their board meetings. Also in there, another change was that if a number of people are speaking on the same topic, that if you've spoken on it, no one is supposed to speak again on the same topic unless there's time. So I think that's what the purpose of this was for. I don't think this stops you
comment on. So it just concerns me that, maybe not this board, but moving down in the future, that we could really limit public comment, and I definitely don't want to see that. So I definitely had those same types of concerns.
of the comment being allowed without giving the 24-hour notice. I mean, just something in there that would give a little bit of leeway, but also kind of set the parameters, because I agree. I mean, I don't think it's okay to limit it just to people who have signed up prior to that. And I think, you know, the part in there about, you know, you can't have multiple people bringing up the same point. I mean, I know that in the past we have been lenient with that, and I think we need to continue to do so because, you know, I think people really need to be heard, you know, and sometimes being heard publicly is very important.
So why don't we pull the policy? Let's, we'll go back, look at our old policy, see how much it, I mean, it didn't change a lot, but those be bringing back the old policy to look at if that's been working for you.
And I think what I'm hearing and what I'm feeling is the last thing we want to do
Absolutely.
and you just don't know ahead of time, all the time, what you're going to say, or even if you're going to come and speak. So people that come and participate perhaps, or if that's just they recommended deleting that.
Check that. And I know in the past, too, we have, I mean, it has in here that has to be a taxpayer or however, it says any district employee, et cetera, et cetera. But I know in the past at other meetings prior to me being on the school board, we have allowed non-taxpayer, non-Dover residents to speak at our meetings. I'm thinking in particular that we had a big lacrosse meeting like several years ago before we got a lacrosse team here. And there were participants from other school districts who came in support of, hey, Dover needs a lacrosse team. So is that if that is the case, and, you know, we need to be careful moving forward. I know we had a situation too with the basketball a few years back, but
Other questions or discussion on that? Okay, now we'll move on to our Consent Agenda period. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve all
s team. We just really wanted to look at every single word in the plan, make sure we were sticking to the plan. Were there changes? Were there things that were different? Amy, are you able to show it or not? If not, that's okay. So what I did is I created a chart of what we changed that we will post on the website with the amended plan, just to kind of give you an idea of the things we
I'm not able to pull it up.
Okay, that's okay. I have it here. Find it somewhere. I did have it, of course. Yeah, I got it. Okay. So a couple, so here are the things we changed in the plan, and again, oh, there it is. Perfect. Great. Thank you. That's revisions. And again, a lot of this was just cleaning it up. So on the left, I have the original statement and the page it was on, and on the right of classroom sinks and water fountains only. We bought several water bottle filling stations from the food service serving lines, because we're not serving food. Everything is packaged and handled. Where we don't have them is in the point-of-sale line. So we changed that, but I will fix that. Elementary chorus and band will be reviewed at the semester time. We did review it, and we felt that, with the pandemic crisis response team felt that this needed to remain intact with cases still growing, that chorus and band at the elementary level is not something we wanted to do at this time. On the left, masking tape, painter's tape to mark floor for appropriate desk spacing. We removed that. We just didn't need to do that. The desks don't move, so we place them and they stay where they are. Chorus, originally we had students where will, where, will, wear face shields. A lot changed with mask wearing, so we replaced that with students will wear face coverings. We added down breakfast, mobile, grab-and-go. We didn't have that, so we added that. We also add in the elementary lunch, assign each student a seat and maintain a seating chart. That became very important once we got in school and had to do enough close contact tracing that we needed seating charts. On the left, there we go, plexiglass will be positioned at cafeteria point-of-sale. We removed that because it's not necessary. Mark seats where students can or cannot sit at tables to allow space between students. We changed that to remove seats where students can, cannot sit at tables to allow space. We removed boxes will be marked on the floor to wait in line to pay. We did not need that. The way we have it organized, students are already separated six feet. They didn't need boxes to stand on. We did have recommendation to wear masks. This is really old. We changed that to required to wear masks. We had signage above all sinks. We had a number, there's a whole section of where signs are to go, and we had them, and you'll see a couple more. We had them above sinks. We had them above toilets. We had them above urinals. And what ended up happening, we just replaced them with signage in bathrooms about hand washing techniques. The same thing with sanitizers. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Hand sanitizer will be located outside of every classroom. We replaced that with hand sanitizers will be located in every hall. Signs will be posted at the following locations, hand washing station, bathroom, staff, or urinal. We replaced that within the bathrooms. We had visitors must wear face coverings when entering the building. We replaced that with visitors must wear face coverings at all times. Recession equipment, we were really clean here. Recession equipment returned shorter version, so we just needed to adjust some of that. Each district building will have sneeze guard dividers for all building receptions and food service worker serving lines. Again, we just removed the food service worker serving lines because that would all be looked at at semester, and just that we are continuing that. We did review it, and we are continuing that. So those are all the updates and changes to the health and safety plan. Again, we just really wanted it to be clean, so tonight we're asking for your approval of that. Okay, then I'm going to jump down to 7/11 job descriptions. We have a number of job descriptions on for approval tonight. As you all know, in the past, our chief financial and operations officer was called the business manager, so we are changing that title to chief financial and operations officer with a job description, so that is up for approval. Then under that, we have had an assistant business manager. Well, now we don't have a business manager, so you don't need an assistant business manager, so we are recommending that we change the assistant business manager to business manager and adjust that job description as well. Then the two jobs the W O E D Associates lease agreement. This is an annual lease. We have with E and B. They have an under a year for the use so we can put our own gas in there. We went through the policies. 7.25 donations, Friendship Community Church and the Rotary. We are very excited for these two donations, and they are to help offset our delinquent lunch accounts, and we have a whole process to determine which students and which buildings that, where it goes. Then I have here that our tax collector resolution rates. You will be establishing the rates for the next four-year term, and then finally, tonight, you will be approving an agreement for road improvements between Dover Area School District and Dover Township. Amy, will you please call Dave? They would like Dave to explain the plan for intermediate avenue, so if you wouldn't mind doing that. So is there any I didn't go over that you wanted more information on in the Consent Agenda?
Comment that we have several retirees. Nate, I didn't know if you were going to mention them, but we have a number of retirees of
early in February. We are incredibly grateful for all that she has contributed to our district in the three and a half, almost four years that she has been with us. To be remiss if I didn't do an extra little special shout-out to Mrs. Nay for retiring after 35 years. She was my creative communications teacher.
It was 7:25, the property tax late fee refund request. Is this something that we have typically done in the past, addressed in the past? I'm concerned about precedent setting here. Understand mistakes happen, things happen, but I just had a question on where that's been in the past.
Yes. Anytime a resident requests a refund of a delinquent tax payment, it is set for board approval. The board must approve those refunds.
Okay. Have we had a lot in the past?
Not since I've been here. We haven't had any. And we actually had a number of residents call about tax refunds, and we went through the process, and we only received the one letter, so.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Nelson, I guess, is on the phone to walk through the road improvements.
I can barely hear you guys on the other end, so bear between where intermediate avenue currently ends up to the property line of
Do we have any, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
I was just wondering, do we have any idea, like approximate cost of what we might be looking at there? I know we talked about this a while back, and I was just wondering if you could give us an update.
Somewhere in the neighborhood of about $250,000, I think, is the estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, I have a question. This is Kathy Herman. When I read over the resolution, it said that the township, or excuse me, the developer had to put in eight feet of a black top, they don't have to put in curbs or sidewalk, but they have to put in a black top area, I guess, for walking as part of the bypass. So do we have to do that also?
Yes, we do. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Mrs. Allman? And Mrs. Alman? And the motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to our human and fiscal resources category now. First item is I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Matt Almer as chief financial and operations officer.
Go move. Second?
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Alman?
I hit the wrong button.
Now entertain a motion to approve the retitement of Jennifer Lepo's position to business manager with a salary adjustment to eighty-four thousand
Second?
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Alman? And the motion carries and congratulations on your new promotion.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the extension of the independent agreement for business manager support with Jennifer Benko, February first, 2021 through April 30th, 2021.
Go move. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Mrs. Alman? And the motion carries. And finally, tonight, I'll entertain a motion to approve the termination of Jason Betts.
Go move. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Alman? And the motion carries. Okay, now we'll move on to our capital projects section. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the attached high school change orders. And you should see those below. There are 10 of them listed for Lowbar and Matchline Mechanical.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Nelson, are you still on the phone that you could walk through any of these?
He's not. Do you need to begin?
Oh, we do, yeah.
You could give us just a high level overview on the higher cost ones. We don't want to put you through a lot of work tonight since you're feeling under the weather right now.
Talk to you, this was the one change order we knew was, that was coming for the pool to make the wall thickness thicker on the side where we have the proximity to the creek down there. The other, I'll just hit the big ones. Number 29 for nineteen thousand eight dollars and seventy-three cents. This is a, it's a culmination of numerous changes with structural steel throughout the last year and a half on the project. We were just kind of adding them up and adding them up. And finally, this is the, this is the culmination of all those, those changes. Excuse me. And they, they wanted one above the school store to match. So that's what this one is for. And it had to be an explosion proof exhaust fan and all the ductwork. And that's what this is for. And then I think that's all the big ones for the high school. Is there any other you wanted to discuss?
No, I think that's good.
Okay, and then there's, there's two small ones, two small ones for the middle school. There was an added dryer vent, number five for 2028, 21, for one of the rooms that didn't have a dryer vent. So that's kind of a high level overview.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, so right now, entertain a motion to approve the high school change orders. We have a motion and a second, I believe, over here. So any other questions from And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Go and get some rest now.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
You too, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Maile, unity council.
All right, let me pull up my minutes here. Okay, so our meeting was on January 7th. Still doing Zoom meetings, of course. With that being the day after the events at the Capitol, there was quite an intense discussion going on. And way to start off the meeting. I was not there at the beginning of the meeting, but was caught up on it. And then talked about the next teach-in event. And when that might be city council members on our list. And we have about 10 to 15 who attend each month. We're trying to get a little bit more organized, maybe identify some key leadership positions, trying to really delineate some organizational roles. And, you know, looking for people's input and ideas on that. And certainly, if you want to be a part of it, we are always looking for new members. So just let us know. Next meeting is February 4th at 6:00.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Maile? Thank you. Okay, Dover Eagle Foundation, as I mentioned before, everything is on pause with the foundation right now. So there's nothing new to report at this time. So we'll move to the York Adams Academy with Mr. Emick.
Yeah, our next meeting will be next Tuesday night. And as currently, we are still doing it by Zoom. We did form a new committee that certain board members are meeting with certain superintendents throughout Believe they had told me that they, we cut some seats out.
Mm-hmm, we are cutting some seats out next year.
Is that because we don't have any participation?
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
I have a couple of questions regarding this. Their budget is an increase of 5% according to their numbers. I was wondering how that's going to impact Dover. Like, do you know what the difference is, Chuck, between last year and this year? Like, did ours, ours did, I'm assuming it didn't go up 5%, but do we know what it did go up?
It, it went up. I can't tell you what percentage it went up, but it was pretty much obviously across the board for that.
Okay.
Steve, I believe it was like roughly 3.6%.
Okay.
3.6% increase for Dover.
Okay, I was just wondering, trying to wrap my head around what parameters they use when they're building a budget. Like, we have to So along those same lines, then, how do they determine how they bill the tuition to each district? Like, looking at their budget, for example, I think York City might have 350 or roughly that many students participating where we had 90. Does that mean that their tuition would be four times what ours is? Or how do they, how do they determine that? And is it, is it directly comparable to the number of students that participate in terms of what you're being charged?
I can't answer that totally for you. I do know there is a formula and a formula is based upon student enrollment. But I don't know if, if they use, you know, what they use to determine, is it, you know, household income, you know, average housing prices? I don't, I don't know those particulars of that.
Okay, the reason I'm asking that is, you know, just a pretty sizable increase there that is obviously passed on to the districts because that's how they're mainly funded, but
And if
For my own satisfaction, do we, the students that go there, I guess, I'm assuming we would have a list of what it is that they're taking, what their, their core studies are. Do we have many that are going there to take their core study?
No.
So we're not duplicating our costs?
Nope.
Okay, that's good to know.
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Alman? And the motion carries. Okay, LIU, Mrs. Krim.
All right, so Kathy Guyer and I sit on a committee that looks at developing and revising the business rules for opening and closing their special education classrooms. And the classrooms, the LIU runs that are more higher need classrooms. And a classroom costs a certain amount of money and it's divided up some of our IU classes as we move down the road. You know, again, we still, the district still runs, runs our own classes and the IU still runs a few classes. And every budget year, we have that discussion as to are we at a point where we can pick up a class? So we'll be talking more about that at budget time and sharing some more information with you. But I think it's great that Kathy and I sit on that. So we have a real good understanding of that.
Any questions for Mrs. Krim? Okay, Mr. Ralhauser, anything on the legislative front or the York Learning Center?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Mrs. Britton, PSBA.
So the first Tuesday in January kicked off the 2021, 2022 general assembly session. It was January 5th. There were 35 or 31 freshman legislators, including six new senators, 25 new members of the House of Representatives. I think we mentioned last year before we broke, the Republicans retained the majority of both chambers. There was an untimely death of Representative Mike Reese, that there's going to be a special election. And then over the weekend, there was a senator who unexpectedly County. On the House side, they've got Representative Kurt Sonny from Erie and Representative Mark Longetti from Mercer County. So just to continue your advocacy throughout the year, those are the chairs for both sides of the general assembly. So just to continue your advocacy throughout the year, those are the chairs for both sides of the General Assembly. Registration information there, as well as March 22nd is Virtual Advocacy Day. So if you are interested in doing virtual advocacy on behalf of PSBA, again, check out their website for more information on that.
Okay, questions for Mrs. Britton? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Herman, Dover Industrial Development Committee.
No report.
Okay, Mrs. Krim, Superintendent's Report.
First, I would like to report to the board the sad passing of April Gunear on Friday evening. April was, worked in our autistic support classroom. She loved her students and she was a champion for their needs. Recently, she was able to Zoom with our autistic support classes. Our thoughts and prayers go out to April's family and especially her son Jacob, who was a third grade student at Weigeltown Elementary. But I have Kelly coming in March, so it'll be okay. All right, no, but we, I wish her well and just. And if you go back and look at pictures two years before, it's the same nine people. So be really good to them so they keep running because they are a wonderful board. They are here, they, for us. They are extremely supportive of our teaching staff and of our administrators. They always put the children first. And it has been a really rough year with COVID and the building project and doing all those things. And they have provided tremendous guidance and really showed trust in my decisions. And I truly, truly appreciate that. So this is greatly appreciated by me and I want to thank you and I wanted to wish you all a happy Board Appreciation Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Krim? Okay, any other comments or observations from our board members tonight?